Oh, I'd like to bring this Ways and Means Committee to order this Tuesday, November 7th. 4:02 PM. Would you take the rule?
Let's.
Here.
The answer.
Yes, ma'am.
Krieger.
He's excused.
Kunitz.
Here.
Ryder.
Here.
Here.
Okay, before you, you have the minutes of 10:317. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
We have a motion in support? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, we have public input for those that want to come before our committee today. I know that sometimes they rush up to the podium and other times they don't. Doesn't look like we're gonna have anybody today. So we'll continue on petitions and communications. Under the court administrator, the acceptance of the seven grant awards. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Support? We have a motion in support? Commissioner, come on.
I was looking at that and maybe, I think I asked before if maybe next week at the full board, we could get what last year's was and this year's was so that we can kind of keep a handle on that if there were any changes.
Right, if it goes up or if it goes down.
Yeah, we didn't get it, so maybe next, the full board, we can have last year's amount, this year's amount, in that way.
Actually, we got a little bit more money this time around. I did for sobriety court, and I think Judge Gill got about the same amount. The family courts, I think, got about the same amount as well.
I'm only saying, Judge, that if we see last year's and see this year's, there's no confusion whatsoever. And I think you're all doing a great job above the money, but if we were to go several years and not ask, you know, you don't know what's happening with money. So, being that we are the managers of the money, it's nice just to see what last year's was, what this year's was. If we get more money, that's great.
Oh, we can sure get you that information. So that you do know, we get audited by the state every year, so we have to account for every penny.
Oh, I know that. Sometimes the state won't send you the same amount of money, they'll send you less.
Yeah, and they have done that. Last year was less than the year before, yeah.
That's why, that's why, I think I've asked for that in the past, is just so we are able to see where we're at. You can't see it with just numbers from the next year.
Oh, that's not a problem, Commissioner. I can get that to you very easily.
Yes.
At a couple of community corrections meetings ago, Joanna was saying that this past year, they gave us an extra $50,000 for programs through there, whether it be treatment or something like that, so I don't know if that's being increased or...
That is different than what this is.
Oh, okay.
That's different. That goes through community corrections.
Okay.
And I really can't speak to any part of that, Commissioner. I don't really know. That's a completely separate thing from our treatment.
They gave us the money, and I think we had like four or five months to use it and everything, and it looked like they were gonna have a balance left over that they weren't gonna use, but I didn't know if, you know, we were gonna, community corrections was gonna get more, or the court system, or what. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Sorry, can you answer that question?
Bobby, you have a question?
Yeah, none of these grants required a county match, but I believe what Commissioner Kunitz was getting at is that we have a long time passed resolution that says if any grant funding decreases or goes away and there's personnel connected to it, then that also has to decrease.
And believe me, our personnel know that.
Okay.
Yeah, they do.
Anyone else?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
We have a motion in support? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. For corporate counsel, we have the voluntary disclosure agreement with BDA. What is your pleasure?
Support.
We have a motion in support? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, we have Senator Rich Arms Parking Lot Paving.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion in support? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our administrative services from the director, we have the renewal of the property and liability insurance with Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion in support? Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you. Deb, afternoon. Normally, we usually get a check every year from AMR, correct?
We have, since I think 2006.
Okay.
It's contingent on renewal for 2018, and we are getting back $192,075. So, it's up to us to decide how we want it distributed. We can, what we've done occasionally in the past is put some of it towards our self-injury self-injury pension fund to use towards any losses that we have, but we can also, you know, we can take part of it, we can have part of it brought back into the general fund. So, it's our discretion to...
So that doesn't include like beer tents and polka bands in battery parks?
Does not.
No? All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Under two, it's request for qualifications, the RFQ for the independent contractor for the Veterans Service Officer, Veterans Service Coordinator.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion in support? Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you. So, probably no one here to address it, so maybe Jim, oh, Deb might be the other two. So this is in place of Mr. Shupack?
This is, this is regarding the position currently, the contractual position currently held by, by Mr. Shupack. We have received interest through the community and other applicants, from other applicants, and we've received some correspondence from some of the veterans groups, and that have asked us to, to look at qualifications and open this up for other applicants. And that's the reason for the RFQ, because there is other interest in the area. And our, Mr. Shupack's position, the contract expires December 31st, and he's held that position for a few years.
Right.
Prior to us under Rachel, if you remember him, he did it on a volunteer basis, so...
Well, I know that he has quite a resume of accomplishments and accreditations in being able to work with our veterans, so I hope that whatever applicants come in, we compare apples on apples.
We received some comparable services, I don't wanna say job description because it's contractual, but throughout the area, so we have, we have quite a few to work from, and which we're hoping to combine those with, and to make requests for qualifications.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same time? Motion carries. Number three, we have the amendment to independent contract agreement with Cristo Latimer. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
We have a motion in support? In support. Any discussion? Seeing none? Oh, Commissioner.
Just so, that's the physician that you asked for on the request for qualifications? And was filled with this in the video?
This, this physician was actually, she's been, this, she's a independent contractor as well. We filled this, entered into this agreement a year ago, and it was a new service agreement. We hadn't had anybody in this, in providing these services for the soldiers relief commission in the past, but she has done very good job, and she's continuing to perform outreach in the community and really hands on, so it was a desire, a soldier relief mission to increase her services to Bay County to be able to provide more. She will be actually doing some outreach in the Bay County area, some rural communities, and...
Does she work hand in hand with this other...
Not, no, because the soldiers, they're too separate. I mean, we have our village funds, but soldiers relief is emergency, providing emergency relief for veterans, some burial benefits, some grave markers, and then the position that our Chupack currently holds, or the contracted position, is a different. It's the main veterans village fund, but it's divided, you know, among the services provided. Just like veterans transportation services, our AM program, that comes out of a different activity as well, so, and then...
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Under D, we have the Director of Recreation and Facilities. Before you, you have a new resolution about the softball contract. There was some modification, there's some wording there, because we really didn't have a contract at the present time, so it's just to enter into discussions with the city, basically.
So...
We have a motion?
Support.
In support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay. Next is the bid for lease of the parking lot spaces. What is your pleasure on that?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion in support? Commissioner Kunitz.
Now, that would be the parking lot that kind of is the closest to the old Bay City Times.
Correct.
And we're currently leasing 75 out to...
Currently leasing...
The DDA or somebody?
Yes, it's a contract that is the city that submits to the DDA.
Okay, and then they must...
And it's 20 years old, because at that time, we signed a 20-year-old agreement.
Now, you know, where those new condos are at the Times, do people park there, or how does it...
They do not, but people at the Times park at the depot parking lot.
Okay.
So I don't know if this would garner any interest from them, if it's any closer for some residents, but we should take the opportunity to see who's willing to, you know, lease them out and bring in some revenue.
So they are currently paying something now?
No, the contract 20 years ago, they gave us a lump sum in the beginning of the contract, a very large lump sum of money, and then they got to use it for 20 years. The 20-year period is now up, and so this contract would then most likely, well, it would definitely bring revenue in, starting at the beginning of the contract, instead of a lump sum, most likely it would be yearly.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, we have the Adult Foster Care Home Lease Agreement. What is your pleasure on that?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion in support? Did you have a question? Commissioner Kunitz?
Yeah, I see that, you know, last year when we had approved that, somehow that must have slipped by.
No, we actually approved all nine contracts to be resigned because they were due to be, they were due to be up, and we just were informed about, I would say maybe about three weeks ago, that we are a behavioral health is switching provider, so now we need to change our contract to have a current contract with the new provider coming in.
For that particular house?
That particular house. So this is just one, and we did this last year, we signed with all nine homes.
All right.
Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, under four, we have the Rec Pro Recreation Software. What is your...
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion in support? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Under E, we have the Health Officer. Hi, Joel.
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same time? Motion carries. Item two is the Amendment Number One to the CPVC Agreement. What is your pleasure there?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion in support? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Under F, we have the 911 Director Generator Maintenance Agreement with Globe Re. Power Systems. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion in support? Any discussion? Thanks for your comments earlier, Chris, in our discussion on the phone. These new contracts are actually gonna save money for the county, about 50% over the existing contract, so, doing a good job. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next is Personnel Director, Luke Ross Busfield, Schedule A. What is your pleasure on that?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion in support? Any discussion? Commissioner Kunitz.
Now, this is annually adjusted or looked at, the stock loss contract. At what point is this gonna be for, this is gonna be for 2018, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then we will eventually see the numbers for 2017, probably when, about April?
The total claim number?
Yeah.
Yeah, April.
Okay. And, because, I don't know, but when we do, when that does come in, that is given to us, correct?
That's correct.
We don't have to ask for it, we automatically will see how we did the previous year and go from there, right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Under two, we have Employees Healthcare Contribution Rates, seeking approval of the 85-15.
Support.
We have a motion in support? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Under three, we have the Wellness Administrative Procedures of Bay County Employee and Retiree Recreation Benefits.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion in support? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Under H, we have Payables, the General Bay Net Center Ridge Arms.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion in support? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Under I, we have the Finance Officer, the Budget Adjustments. What is your pleasure on that?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion in support? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Under two, we have Analysis of the General Fund Equity.
Who'd receive?
Support.
We have a motion to receive? In support? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Under three, we have Executive Directive 2007-11. Motion to receive would be in order.
So moved.
We have a motion and support? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Under four, we have the Request for Proposal, the RRP, for a Three-Year Cost Allocation Plan.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion in support? Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, we have one added to the agenda, or I think everybody has it, it's from the Sheriff's Department. It's License and Service Agreement for the Jail Management System, Upgrade Contract Newul for Fiscal Year 2018 between Tyler Technologies, New World, and Bay County.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion in support? Commissioner Kunitz.
That $239,000, is that for the 2018 budget, or is that something that needs to be taken care of this year?
The funds are already budgeted in 2017.
Oh.
Actually, the software, I think, about $200,000, and there's a maintenance cost.
All right.
That, the funds are already...
So there is no budget adjustment?
No.
Okay.
Anyone else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. I don't believe we have any referrals. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Do we need a close session?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Ms. Laney, Commissioner.
Um, thank you. Joel, if I can get a question for you.
We knew we'd get you after some, Joel.
Well, I didn't wanna talk on something that wasn't on the agenda, but under miscellaneous, we're winding down our summertime activities at the Bay City State Park.
Yes.
Okay? And in doing so, one of the comments that came out of how the park did through the summer was a situation that arose where we had a closing on a Friday.
Mm-hmm.
And it was a hot weekend, of course.
Yes.
And it wasn't until the following Tuesday...
That we were able to open it back up.
Correct. So you got Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
So...
And so my question is...
Sure.
Is there a way, or how can we go about not losing a whole weekend at the park when chances are good, if the water was able to be retested, that we may not have lost four days of people getting out into the bay?
Sure, that's a, that's a good question. And if the date that you're thinking of, I can think of one specific weekend where we had a variety of storms that occurred in high wave conditions that happened through the weekend, and a decision was made while we consulted with environmental health staff and SFSU, which was, it just doesn't seem to be safe to go out there anyways, and there was forecast for thunderstorms and rain. And I believe in that instance, we decided not to do extra testing. There are occasions when we know, for example, you gave the example of it's gonna be 90 degrees, we know people are gonna be going out to the bay one way or another, so we will go and test. Usually, if we test on a Friday and tests come out good, we don't have to go back out on a Saturday.
Right.
But we have done in the past, gone out and tested on a, on a Saturday. And in those cases...
So that is feasible to have that?
It is feasible to do that. We would just run the tests here at the Health Department rather than take it to Saginaw Valley.
All right. When you start to talk about what the forecast is, let me remind you that our weather forecasters in a tri-city area are usually 50% wrong. I mean, where else can you have a job and get paid and be wrong half the time? I mean, there's been a lot of times where they've called for rain and storms, and of course, it goes one way from us and the other way, and we're still high and dry, and people wanted to have access to the water. So if we can look at 2018 and maybe work with the DNR a little closer on what we can and can't do, we can avoid having a weekend of loss.
Sure, absolutely. We will look into that.
All right. Appreciate it.
Commissioner, go ahead, Chuck.
I just have one comment, Joel. Thank you very much for coming up to the Pinconning Standee's Rotary. You put on a feel-good presentation informing the people in Northern Bay County about the clinic and the dental clinic and everything. It was a great job, and we hope we didn't bore you with all the questions and stuff, but there were, there's some pretty good questions, and maybe we'll have a little summit up there some evening, get different department heads from all of the county up there, because there was a real interest in what you said. I got a lot of comments, an article in the paper up there, so thank you again for, at the last minute, coming up there.
Oh, but it's not a problem, and like I said, it's, we are trying to do more outreach to the different areas of the county, northern parts of the county as well, so we're happy to be there.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner, Eric.
Thank you. Joel, I forgot, I probably should have asked you this a month ago, or two months ago, but when I was in Traverse City, they had the E. coli warning on the beach there.
Yes.
But they had different levels of E. coli warnings where you can go in the water, you know, I was surprised to see it, but they had a, they had a sign out there with the different level, a different level of warnings depending on what the...
The amount of E. coli?
I guess, I mean, I really don't know, but I saw the sign, I thought, I wonder why we don't do that? I don't know, and I don't know, and I don't know what the answer was, but I saw it there, you know, I thought it was pretty interesting. But it's just something you might want to see what, and you know, you might want to check and see what they do, because I don't know. But it just said, you know, go off to your waist, you know, it's okay.
We have the...
You don't have to...
We have the same standards as they do.
Okay.
And so what they probably, is probably do more outreach and education in the community to say, hey, you know, even though we found 200 micro liters of E. coli, or counties of, in a 100-micro, micro-liter sample, that's still not enough to trigger an advisory or a closure. You know, when you mention E. coli to anybody that doesn't really understand how it works, it automatically get all freaked out, lack of better term. But they have to understand is E. coli is all around us, and that what we're concerned about is the higher levels that might, that could potentially trigger an illness in someone, especially, you know, small children or someone with compromised health, so, but it was probably their attempt to explain the standards.
Maybe, I've never seen anything like that before, so that's why, I mean, it's the first time I saw this, I thought it was kind of interesting that they would, how they would have a, you know, what are they doing that we're not, or what, what aren't they doing that they're supposed to do, you know?
No, they're actually pretty proactive, as we are here. They're a little more proactive in, a lot of their sewer systems tied together and actually flow right out into the bay there, and so that, you know, they work traditionally for that. We don't really have that problem here in Bay County. But they're also work diligently, because they've got a lot of home, or a lot of people that use the beach and like to parade their pets up and down the beach, and that's not good for E. coli either, so...
Yeah.
Joel, one quick question I have.
Sure.
Is there a plan or suggested location for the dental clinic yet?
Uh, not as of yet. We are in active conversations with, sorry, the lights went down for those people watching on TV. We're in active conversation with the folks from my community dental centers to find an appropriate spot. We, you know, we shared some different potential sites with them, but in essence, they're gonna come up with the site and actually purchase us, purchase that or rent it on their own volition, and that wouldn't be subject to our agreement or anything like that.
Right.
But we want to have it somewhere that's accessible, and they want to have it somewhere too that's accessible, so that's in, you know, easy distance and of where the needs are, or that it's on a bus route, preferably both.
Just as a comment to that, I forwarded information that Joel gave me on the dental clinic people to Trevor at Bay Future, if he could assist them in any way with the location.
Thank you, Joel.
You're welcome.
Anything else on miscellaneous? Okay, announcements, anybody got an announcement?
Move to adjourn.
Support.
Motion in support? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, where is your...
I'd call, I order the, uh, special meeting of the Bay County Board of Commissioners on November seventh at four forty PM. I'm going to click, please take your role.
Tarantia?
Here.
Krieger?
Yes.
Biggik?
Excuse me.
Coonan?
Here.
Tilly, oh, I'm sorry. It's the old cheek. Ryder?
Here.
And Lutz.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the invocation and pledge.
Lord God, the strength of all will put their trust in you. We ask that you will bless this session of the Board of Commissioners this day, and that you will lead and guide this board in the decisions made, so that all citizens of this community will benefit. In your holy name we ask this, amen.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, including all rights and freedoms, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda, citizen input, if there's any one in the audience, which is, there's only one person, who would like to step forward, uh, now would be the time. Seeing none.
John, no influence.
I can't believe, I can't believe it, but, uh, we're going to go right at the items for consideration, we have Resolution Number Two Thousand Seventeen Dash Two Thirty-Four, the Center Ridge Parking Lot Paving Project.
Support.
Or discussion. Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, next we'll have Commissioner Lutz, ways and means, please.
Yes, we have, uh, Resulation, Resolution Two Thousand Seventeen Dash Two Thirty-Five, which is the Bay County Sheriff's, uh, Management Software Upgrade at the jail, I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business? Miscellaneous? Announcements? Who wants to...
Yeah, I'd just like to, uh, let everyone know that again, the Veterans Council, Bay County Veterans Council will be holding their ceremony at eleven o'clock Saturday at the Avenue of Heroes monument, from the county building, and that will be at eleven o'clock, so, if any of you can make it up to pay tribute to our veterans on Veterans Day, especially those who lost their lives, and support of our nation and our democratic, uh, principles, I'd like to see you there.
Okay, and, uh, one other note, if anybody's watching live and haven't yet voted, today is voting day across the county, uh, please get out and vote, I think it's always a good thing to do, and with that...
Motion to adjourn is always in order. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.